This is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners for the public hearing on the Thurston County 2019-2020 Biennial Operating and Capital Budgets. Earlier, we met at four o'clock and we covered the general government. And now, we're going to move into the six o'clock period of the program as far as the public hearing, and it is the capital facilities plan. And so, the proposed amendments to Chapter Six of the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan, which is called a capital facilities element in the 2019 budget improvement plan. So, the purpose of this portion of the public hearing is that it's still considered accepting testimony on the amendments to update the county's capital facilities plan through the 2019 through 2024 capital improvement plan, which is also Chapter Twenty-Six. So, in back, we have the sign-in sheets, and if you wish to testify, I ask you to go ahead and sign in. We'll give you three minutes when you come to the podium, and you can give your testimony. In the meantime, we have Chris Chapeau from the CPED to give us a little bit of background on the capital facilities of the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan. Sir will give us the background, and then we'll have question and answers, and then we'll go forward with the rest of the program. Yep?
Thank you.
You're back.
Good evening. Christina Chapeau, Associate Planner with the Community Planning with the CPED Department. This portion of tonight's public hearing is to receive testimony on the update to Chapter Six of the county's comprehensive plan, the capital facilities plan, and the annual amendment of the capital improvement program. For the record, some process history, the planning commission was briefed on August fifteenth of this year, and the board was also briefed on September nineteenth of this year on these two plans. The planning commission held a public hearing and work session on September nineteenth. At that time, they unanimously recommended adoption of the update to the capital facilities plan. The public notice for this hearing was published in the Olympian on November eighth of 2018, and a news release was issued on November twenty-first. To date, I have not received any comments on this plan. Also, the draft documents have been available on the community planning's website at ThurstonPlanning.org. So, what is a capital facilities plan? Well, it is Chapter Six of the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan. The plan defines the goals, policies, and objectives, as well as outlines the six-year strategy to provide facilities to keep pace with the population growth over the planned period, to maintain or implement the level of service standards described in the plan, and clearly identify the funding sources for the facilities. Although proposed costs and potential funding sources are identified in the CFP, it is not a budget, nor is it an obligation to the Board of County Commissioners for future actions. The capital facilities plan is a financial planning document, and for future capital programs to be constructed, if the board approves, the project does need to be in the capital facilities plan. So, Chapter Six is one of fourteen chapters of the comprehensive plan pursuant to the State of Washington's Growth Management Act, RCW 3670A. The county is required to have a comprehensive plan, which was first adopted in 1975. The comprehensive plan is the guiding document that describes how the county will grow and change over the next twenty years. The Growth Management Act also has required content for the capital facilities planning element. Those include inventory of the existing facilities and locations of capital and capacities, forecast of future needs, new and expanded facilities with locations and capacities, and at least a six-year plan for anticipated financing, that is, A, within the projected capacity of the county, and B, identifies potential funding sources of the public funding. So, what has changed? Periodically, the county is required to conduct a review of the comprehensive plan and the development regulations, to bring them in line with relevant changes to the Growth Management Act and updated goals, policies based on population changes and growth of the county. The county is in its periodic update, and as such, this year, staff not only completed the annual amendment to the capital facilities plan, but also completed the periodic review and update of this chapter. This means that staff took a look at the opportunity to reassess the program and make sure that we were moving towards the vision the community has determined for itself. We've updated the inventory. We've assessed progress on implementation. We've updated the forecast and identified any new needs, and we have updated the implementation program. In addition, staff streamlined background and goals and policies in the chapter. We've cross-referenced relevant information with the comprehensive plan, the transportation improvement program, and the capital improvement program. We've also created a standalone six-year capital improvement program and made references to it in Chapter Six. And that's important because we used to have a document that was one hundred and six pages long, the capital facilities plan, and a supplement that was four hundred-plus pages long. So, our capital improvement program last year looked like this. This year, we were able to streamline it down to thirty-six pages in the chapter. So, this is our chapter, and our capital improvement program is now about one hundred and sixty pages. So, this makes it reader-friendly for the public, it's concise, and it will be easy to find. And that concludes my staff report.
Any comments, questions, Chris?
Very good. Good job. Thank you.
That's not easy to reduce it from three hundred pages down to four hundred.
In total, it was about five hundred and six pages.
Yeah. That is crazy. Thank you very much for your work.
I have a comment, if you will. Within the plan, can you just, in layman's terms, cite a couple of examples of what a couple of projects might be, so the general public can underput in any kind of -- because we speak in government wording and capital this and capital that.
Right.
And I just wanted to give what some of the dollars might be going towards.
Sure.
Pick at your will, whatever it might -- what looks good to you.
Yeah. So, one of the potential projects is a capital facilities plan, such as the Shalas Western Trail Culvert Replacement Program.
There you go.
Or our Fish Passage Program, all the culverts that would need to be replaced for that, any roadway projects, including bike lanes and sidewalks.
Okay. That kind of stuff. Right. Good. All right. So, we're at the point where see if there's any public, anybody in the audience from the general public would like to come to the podium to speak on behalf or speak in regards to the capital facilities plan. And seeing no one coming to the podium, I'll just say that we're done with that portion. So, it's simple as that. Yeah. Okay. So, does anybody have any questions, comments about the capital facilities plan? Staff? No? Anything for you?
No, sir.
Very well done. How about you?
Chris, do you have any questions?
I tried to get something. It's all good. Okay. So, at six fifteen, we're supposed to have any additional public?
Yep. We will continue with the overview at that time.
Okay. So, we'll just recess for a few minutes, and then come back on the air and then take it, see if anybody shows up in the public. We are going to go recess. Six fifteen. Okay. Okay. This is the continuation of the budget public hearing for today, December thirty -- December third, 2018. And at six fifteen, we had a program scheduled for the general public, anybody who wanted to come and testify or have any kind of question and answers for those elected and directors, department directors who were here earlier in the day. I do not see anybody in the audiences from the general public to be able to testify, so I'll just say that if there's any last-minute comments or words as far as the process or the scene.
No.
Okay. So, at this juncture, I'm going to just recess the -- you got one thing?
Well, yes. Well, we're just going to continue briefly with the general overview.
Okay.
So, I just have a few things to share with you this evening.
I got ahead of myself.
This is the operating preliminary budget. You've already seen this. We do want to talk briefly about the workforce, and what you have on a separate piece of paper.
Oh, okay.
So, you can start to hopefully read some of the very small print, is general fund workforce. So, what this chart shows is that, for the most part, the general fund has not caught up, if you will. We don't pay for as many FTEs out of the general fund as we did before the recession hit. But even though the number of FTEs paid out of the general fund is not as many as before the recession, overall, across all funds, we are at about that point. And even these offices and departments on this list, who, for the most part, again, are not at pre-recession levels, have -- most of them have additional FTEs paid for by other funds. So, I would just like to run down the list and let you know how many more FTEs they have compared to what's on this page. So, starting with the sheriff in law enforcement, in addition to one hundred and twelve point nine four FTEs, he also has point eight of an FTE that is paid for out of the boating fund and from the new drug task force fund that we have taken over from Lacey. In the sheriff corrections, in addition to one hundred and seven point six one FTEs, there are twenty-one point six FTEs paid out of detention sales tax. So, the total FTEs is closer to one hundred and twenty-eight, almost one hundred and thirty FTEs for corrections. That is substantially above the one hundred and eleven that we had in 2008. The prosecuting attorney's office, in addition to the roughly sixty-five FTEs paid for by the general fund, has an additional seven point six FTEs paid from restricted funds. Juvenile court in probation has fifty-two FTEs paid from the general fund and six more paid by treatment sales tax. Superior court has thirty-five point eight FTEs from the general fund and additional five mainly paid by treatment sales tax. The clerk's office has thirty-three point five FTEs, and even after we take the FTEs out that the restricted funds can't afford, there are five FTEs being paid by restricted funds. In district court, twenty-nine FTEs paid by general fund and four point seven five paid by restricted funds. In public defense, thirty-seven point eight four FTEs and additional one point two paid by treatment sales tax. And I would say, when you look at 2008 for public defense, there were only seventeen FTEs. That is because we contracted for almost all of public defense cases back in 2008. We began bringing those in-house in the county. You see, in 2010, 2011, we started actively bringing those cases in for better management of them. The coroner has seven FTEs. All of his FTEs are paid by the general fund. Pre-trial services has five FTEs and one paid by the general fund. In the auditor's office, there are forty-four FTEs in the general fund and one point two five paid by other funds. The assessor has thirty-one FTEs from the general fund plus one that you heard about this afternoon that is paid by the REIT technology fund.
That's part of the thirty-one?
That is in addition to the thirty-one.
Thank you.
Yep. Human resources has almost thirteen FTEs plus seven paid by restricted funds. The treasurer has eight point nine FTEs from the general fund and three point seven from restricted funds. The commissioners have sixteen FTEs. All of those are paid by the general fund. There are no FTEs paid by restricted funds in the commissioner's office.
Could I clarify something there?
Sure.
What was the number again on the commissioners?
The commissioners has sixteen FTEs. Seventeen in 2019, and then we lose one FTE.
Okay.
One of our clerical FTEs is solely for a project that will complete, and at that point, that FTE will go away, and you will have sixteen positions in your office.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. WSU Extension is two point one four FTEs, and those are the only FTEs that the county pays for. There are additional payments from WSU, but within the county, all of them are paid from the general fund. Let's see. Emergency Services, eight point oh five FTE. None of those from restricted funds, although the medic one fund does pay for ten FTEs. And then, in the planning department, oh, there are no FTEs paid for by non-departmental. Those are all county-wide initiatives that are paid from non-departmental. And then, the planning department has eleven point four five FTEs. None of their FTEs are paid for by restricted funds. So, you see that these offices and departments, again, the number of FTEs paid out of the general fund have gone down slightly and are still less than they were a decade ago throughout the county, but restricted funds are starting to make up the difference. And we've added FTEs, like corrections. We've added quite a few FTEs using detention sales tax. So, we are making the best possible use of other funds in the workforce. When you look at the general fund workforce compared to population growth, what you see is that the workforce trend is just barely keeping up with the population growth. So, we're hanging on to our seats, if you will, to be able to continue to provide general fund-funded services compared to the population. But when you look at the total county workforce, over the last decade, we have overall less FTEs throughout the county than we did in 2008, and we have about almost forty thousand more citizens in our county. So, our workforce growth is pretty flat and as the county population grows. So, we find it difficult to continue to provide services, let alone increase them for the increasing demand that we face. Highlights, even with the restricted funds, there are a lot of highlights. The board has found creative ways to fund things throughout this budget, so these slides just list a few of the highlights, and I'm just going to hit on a few of them. There are many. Overall, there is funding included for moving forward on a courthouse and civic center project that's in the capital -- the capital budget in the capital facilities plan. In economic vitality, there are investments for roads, positions to address land use reviews, improving customer access with web-based software, key staff for capital projects in public works, and, excuse me, funding for studies to reduce flooding, increase safety, mobility, expanding trails. In law and justice, you've added two deputies for the sheriff's law enforcement, expanded staff for the coroner's response. We've shifted funding in district court, public defense away from contractors. That'll provide a better service. There's a public records team you heard the prosecutor talk about. There's funding for mental health treatment and crisis care in the jail. And jail expansion, capital project is funded to address the needs of the female population and a population with special needs. These are all -- all of the things we're looking at in the highlights are in alignment with the strategic plan. And there are eighteen initiatives, as the sheriff mentioned earlier, in the strategic plan. Those initiatives are not in a priority order, but the board has addressed something in every one of those to try to meet the needs of the county as we move forward. In general government, you've addressed the needs for elections. There's a human resource position to address workforce needs. There's the new information technology department. We look at cybersecurity, what a huge issue that is. So, you funded a position to address that, and we're going to replace the county website. In Health and Human Services, you'll hear more about that tomorrow. There's funding for affordable housing and homeless issues, which, in our citizen's survey, turned out to be the one -- number one issue across the county for our citizens is the affordable housing and homelessness concern. So, the board has added funding for that. There's money for opioid response coordinator. We're purchasing naloxone. The regional nurse network or the RSN program has been expanded. There's money for a veterans case manager and hazardous weather task force. So, there are many needs being met in Health and Human Services. More of those are water quality monitoring and environmental health. We're funding food inspection systems and software and providing a half a position to assist the South County cities with emergency management.
That's right. Good.
In legislative arena, we're improving access by improving our equipment, and you have diligently found ways to use restricted funds creatively to preserve the general fund for the things that we can't fund in any other way. And general fund is a restricted resource, so we have worked very hard to find other ways to fund the things that we need across the county.
Creatively and legally.
And legally, legally in every case. Thank you for -- yes.
Yeah.
But still a stretch, right?
Yes, we can stretch, but in no way have any of your choices broken the laws. The challenges, of course, are limitations on revenue, especially because we have faced reductions in revenue, big reductions from the state that we're hoping reductions in revenue, big reductions from the state that we're hoping to have them restore. The property tax growth limitations, our revenue grows nowhere close to our expenses. So that has been a problem. And then, as we talked about earlier, the elimination of the state court impact fees. The legislature, when they don't pay their share, creates a burden on the general fund that we are struggling to fill. So those are the big challenges. There are some items, as I said earlier, I'm going to use your book again, Romero. When we prepared this massive book looking at thousands and thousands of lines of code, there are a few things that came up after this budget book went to print. So when you go into deliberation on Wednesday, I will be asking you to consider the following items. One of the things that we considered in the forecast but have not put in the budget yet is a cost of living increase for your employees. We held that back as we're in labor negotiation, but now's the time to put it in. So we'll be talking about adding that. We have an arbitration decision for the sheriff's law enforcement staff, so we'll be asking to add money for that. There's the additional funding has come in through federal requirements, so we're getting grant funding for the inter-local drug fund. So there's an adjustment. We'll ask you to authorize for that. The sheriff has reclassified a position. You've indicated support for that funding. We'll ask you to formalize your authorization of that. There is additional grant funds that are coming in that we have found out about in the last few weeks for the sheriff, for CPAD, for the public, that's Community Planning and Economic Development Department, and for the prosecuting attorney. So we'll ask you to authorize those amounts for, of revenue and to be able to spend them. The treatment sales tax, this is one of the places where we've gotten creative and diligent, if you will, about billing an alternative funding source. So we would like to, in accordance with fair and equitable allocation methods directed by state law, we want to charge indirect to treatment sales tax. So we have an amount for you to authorize us to shift out of the general fund into TST. And finally, the clerk's office brought up the idea of charging part of their cost to TST. So that's the short list of changes that we are going to suggest to you on Wednesday. Do you have any questions about any of those?
Any questions?
No.
I do too. Go ahead.
The individual sheet that's here on general fund workforce, is it different than the one that's in the booklet?
No.
It appeared to be the same, but I want to make sure, we got a separate one. I didn't know if it was a change.
We gave you one so you could hopefully read the tiny little print.
I found that helpful, yeah. I just wanted to be sure what's on the, on the, okay.
No, it's the same. It's exactly the same.
Also, going, oh, let me go back. It was here somewhere. My question is, I'll find it. The clerk, the clerk had some major budget issues late last year that spilled into this year, and you saved it. You saved the county, and I thank you for that. And then the clerk also had some issues that they addressed with the board, she and her staff addressed with the board a week or so ago that was somewhat confusing, and then a follow-up letter that was kind of confusing. And so my question is this, since the clerk wasn't here at all today for any of the public hearings, did the clerk contact you to have any questions or comments about the budget? Or am I to assume everything is just hunky-dory?
I believe that the clerk has addressed her issues directly with you through the meeting last week and the letter that you received from the clerk. I have not heard any additional from the clerk, but I will be working closely with the clerk as we go forward with the budget that you authorize.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
So we'll get more into this short list on Wednesday.
Robin, if I may, sorry. So this is titled, "Items Not in the Budget," and you went through each one of those. And so I get that they're not literally
Not yet.
in the budget. However, when Chris was here earlier, she mentioned the transportation improvement plan as part of the capital facilities, which it should be. Not to be mistaken where I'm going with all this, the transportation benefit district. So is there, so it's not, the transportation benefit district is in the budget, and we have to make an option to do something with that later.
Right.
Right? I just didn't want that TIP to be mixed up with TBD.
Oh, thank you.
Right. And how that may or may not stay in the budget, the TBD.
Right.
Right, and so, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, because that's a huge decision to make on that part. Okay. My other question is much simpler. Is the ending fund balance for this is projected to be what number?
So
And it doesn't have to stick, and that's not until that.
So we're right around $10 million at the end of 2020.
How about?
The ending fund balance in general fund.
Okay, so 10 million.
Which is just enough to meet cash flow. However, that has not been adjusted yet for the change in accounting process that we're going to do for sales tax receipts.
Which is still to come.
Yes, that is still to come.
Okay, and how much do you estimate that to be to the better?
So we're assuming that that's going to be roughly $2 to $2.5 million increase in your fund balance.
Ending fund balance, right?
Yes, ending fund balance.
So, not a trick question here, how many years back have we gone to where we did not meet the ending fund balance of $10 million or more? Best of your memory.
2014, we were below $10 million.
At 9.96, something like that?
Mm-hmm, yep. And at that time, we were, we were checking fund balance and actually cash balance every single day to ensure that we could meet payroll, and it got pretty darn close.
Right. Okay, so we've been good for four or five years, so, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Sure.
My final comment, I wanted to thank you, Robin, and your band of renown, all your staff, but like I said before, the Herculean work that's done in a Bynum budget, thank you very much. All of you, thank you very much.
It is an extreme amount of work. Just on a personal note, I was reflecting back to the many years I spent building budgets at the state. And in a state agency, I had from the time the legislature went home around June until I turned the budget in in September. So I had about three or four months to prepare my agency budget. And then when I worked in the governor's office, we'd receive those budgets at the first of September, and we'd come out with a budget in December. So I had three or four months to work on the governor's budget. In the county, that time is compressed to weeks, and it's every bit as complicated as it was at the state. So budget staff, my budget staff, and budget staff across the county do an amazing job. There are going to be things we miss in a budget of 360 pages and thousands and thousands of lines of code. We really do a phenomenal job, and I appreciate everything they do.
I agree. I agree. It's not easy. How about you, sir, anything?
Thank you very much. Hope it all adds up.
So, more to come tomorrow.
I got extra facets in my pocket. I got some paint. Romero, anything?
No, I'd just like to record what Commissioner Edwards answered this morning. And
You know, it's 300-plus pages, but it has been weeks and perhaps months in the making. Because as you went through all those meetings, all the deliberations, and some of the difficult decisions that you made, it's all about that process. It takes diligence and focus. So thank you to you as well.
That was more pepper than salt when we began the budget process.
Yeah. All righty, I'll just take us through the rest of this here for today, and if there's no other comments or questions, I'll just go ahead and recess. And before we do, I'll just mention that tomorrow, we will resume the public hearing at 1:30, and we pick up with the environment. I saw that, and I can't remember my sheet. Here we go. Transportation, environment, and land use at 1:30. And at 3:30, we have the budget amendment number seven. And then at 4:00 PM, we have health and human services, the public health and social services to include emergency services. And at 6:30, we have the open forum again. But any time during that, the public's welcome to come and partake. We have it kind of structured where there's a background and a Q and A, but at the end, we try to wrap it up where anybody can come just based on their work schedule, the tempo or family issues or whatever. We try to give the public all the opportunity possible to have a say in their budget, the way their tax dollars are being paid and the services provided or not provided. But this is what it's all about, and we've done a spectacular job so far. And I'll just recess this until 1:30 tomorrow, before December. Thank you very much.